Start our May 29, May 19 work session and board meeting. We'll start out with introductions.
Pat.
Go ahead.
All right.
I'm your leader.
I'm Bat Malone, Commissioner.
Annabelle, how do you do, Commissioner?
Joe Kirby, County Administrator.
Vance Corning, County Counsel.
That it.
All right. Introductions from those that are calling in.
Say hello, Commissioner.
Daniel Brown, House of Representatives.
Elizabeth Rack, Public Affairs.
Reese Farley, Board of Commissioners.
Brian Liamer, Committee of Directors.
Is that everybody?
Colonel Eric, Mr. Michael Edwards.
Eric, Commando, Board Recorder.
Are there any announcements? Any comments from the public? Hearing none, we'll move on to item three, review and approve the agenda. I've got one item on the consent calendar. I would like to make a motion to remove item 6.2, revised budget bylaws. The notice for that did not go out in a timely matter, and I would like to postpone that for one week to our board meeting on May 26.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye? Motion carries. Any other discussion on the agenda?
That's coming from me.
Yeah, don't turn your mic on.
Okay. Item four, there have been no chair decisions since our last board meeting, so we're ready for item five, the work session, discuss standby me project with Council of Governments. And we have Sue Forti and Randy Moore going to lead that discussion, so.
So, and I, this is good, Traver, I wanted to say I was here to perform as the government that works here with Randy.
Okay.
In terms of my call, I was just those things I need to deal with.
Okay. In case folks couldn't hear that, Mayor Traver is joining us as the interim COG Executive Director. So, take it away, Sue or Randy. And you did send out some, a worksheet yesterday. I assume you will be referring to that.
Good morning, Commissioners, yes. Hi, this is Randy here from Oregon, Tepkitts West. And I see Sue Forti, our Finance Director, is also on the line. We didn't really do the pre-planning of who was going to have a conversation with you this morning, so we might just start a talk to it, and each of us to share a little bit of information. I do apologize for sending over some information late yesterday, and wanted to make sure that we have updated information here with you about the project. I think there has been a concern about just a slow gaining of traction on the project, but I did want to let you know that, I think, over the last several weeks, three or four weeks, we've made pretty good progress. I would encourage you to look at the progress reports that we shared. There are some items from quarter two which are carrying over to quarter three, but over the last couple of weeks, we have had conversations and entered into a more formal and expanded contract with the Malia, sorry, I'm just all of a sudden going to blank on her last name, Malia, who is our contractor. Thank you. The Malia who's our contractor and is going to be working with us on the standby me project so that we are expanding the number of hours that she's working on the project. She's already moved that because of that, and that we've created a pretty thorough two-pager, so that, and that's in a final draft phase, so that we're going to start getting that out to funders. Malia actually did make her first email outreach kind of contact with a funder from Wells Fargo yesterday, talking about the project. We're also now working on some things such as website development. We talked with the contractor for that yesterday, and I'm hoping that within the next couple of weeks, we have a sort of rough sketch of what that looks like. One of the documents that we also sent to you is a budget proposal, and it's sort of a stepped budget proposal. So, the conversation that we have had with Malia is what is it that we are looking for as far as funding, that we can just start incrementally rolling out the program, waiting until we have $400,000 on our belts, which would, under our belts to go ahead and forward, would, I mean, it would be nice to have $400,000 tomorrow, but since we don't, we know that we're going to have to start making some baby steps towards movement without that money. And so, if you look at that, there's actually, the first column is an idea of if we were able to receive $100,000 of funding, what small incremental steps can we do to make the program more sustainable and moving forward? And then incremental steps in the columns after that of, and then if we add another $50,000 or another, you know, and so starting to track what that looks like. I, I'm going to leave it to Sue to talk to you about billing, because Benton County generously has supported us in sort of the idea of doing this demonstration project, and we have billed for some of those funds, but I think our plan is to hold on future billing until we have accomplished more of the deliverables, but I just wanted to let Sue have a conversation with you about that.
Hi, I'm Sue Forti, I'm the Finance Director at the Council of Governments, and I appreciate your, the opportunity to share with you today the great progress that we've made in the last few weeks on this program. I think it's going to be an outstanding fit for our agency, moving forward if we can, now that we're getting it off the ground and we're making, we have some traction. I also received a message from Malia this morning that she's also reached out to US Bank, she's also reached out to a couple other large funders that we're, that we've been working with her on and trying to formalize who we're going to ask and who we're going to start approaching. As for the funding and the billing with Benton County, as I talked to Commissioner Malone last week regarding the project and where we were going with this, we don't feel, as the Council of Governments, that we can bill for something that we have not achieved and met the deliverables that were in the contract and moving forward. We will not be billing for third quarter billing until a time that we are able to demonstrate that we've actually have enough traction behind us and we're moving forward with the project. I just don't feel that it's appropriate to bill for something that we really don't have, we don't have anything to present to you that is larger and bigger and better than moving the program forward. So, knowing that we have some work to do, we do have some Benton County funding sitting on our books that we are actually currently now using to help fund Malia's activities. We are not charging any indirects to this grant at this time, so there'll be no administrative costs being charged. So, in the original budget, I believe Jennifer Moore had about $9,000 in administrative costs for COG. So, Randy and I are kind of working at this right now as kind. We've also coming up with some in-kind schedules, which are very critical to billing large funders. They want to see that the hosting agency is doing some in-kind work. So, Randy and I have committed 16 hours a month of our time as in-kind right now to start forming informations for funders. We're also looking at some rent costs that we could use as in-kind in our building for some, some of the staffing that is happening. So, I know that I'm working on a large in-kind project so that we can show that to these larger funders that really, really want to see that the hosting agency does put some skin in the game, basically. I know that historically, to this point, there has been little conversation around where we have achieved successes, and so hopefully with Randy and I and Malia, who is doing an amazing job, we will be able to give you monthly updates really regularly, and you'll start seeing that we've made some great progress in the project. Again, I think that this is a great relationship that we have with Benton County in this project, and I think that moving forward, we should be able to be very successful. Any questions on the billing and whatnot?
Zan.
Thank you, Sue and Randy. I am glad to hear that there is forward progress. I have been very concerned about this project because of the fact that I was the one that brought their original relationship from Delaware in their standby me program. I was incredibly impressed by their program and felt that the Council of Governments would be a good local administrator of program, and it was a good fit with the organization. But I had been increasingly distressed over the last few months by the lack of progress and the lack of any kind of movement. And again, this comes from my own background in fundraising and program development and knowing what it takes and knowing that this kind of environment with the COVID-19 pandemic was not something that would shut this kind of activity down. So, I appreciate your reports and your scrambling to put them together. I remain a bit concerned about the lack of clarity about who's the leader, who owns this program, and having someone that can really run with it and own it and make it happen. But I, I know Malia Ashford personally, I have great respect for her, and I hope that she will have enough, not only enough budget time, but enough authority in the relationship with the Council of Governments to make this happen. I will continue to be on top of it to best of my ability, because I am a very avid supporter of what this financial education program that's very person-focused can do for all of our community members here in Benton County and hopefully over the tri-county geography.
Commissioner Ogeron, thank you so much for your, you know, your comments and your questions. I would like to just put out there right now that at COG, I'm the Agency Lead for the program, and I'm working closely with Malia. Up until a couple of weeks ago, we didn't know each other, but we're really starting to develop some flow and getting our information back and forth, and I'm excited to have that partnership with her. As I said, we have expanded her scope and given her more permission to take some lead on, you know, letting us know where we think, she thinks the next steps are, because she is that project funder, grant writer, she has that skill set that we don't necessarily have, but we're excited to have that collaboration happen. And I believe by June, we will have a lot of great information to share with you. I think we are starting to really make, gain some headway and have some movement on this.
Thank you, I really appreciate that.
Annabelle, did you have any questions? Okay. Zan, you mentioned who owns the program. I assume that means at the COG?
Yes, and Randy just answered that question. She stated that she is the in-house program lead, and it's her responsibility to supervise Malia and to make sure that things move forward. And I, I am pleased to hear that Malia Ashford, as a contractor, has more authority at this point to move things forward also. I think that, well, I know from the Delaware program that the program is poised for success as long as we grab the reins and go, because the major grant funders from the private foundation world really have an interest in replicating it across the United States. And so, we are the first place where this replication is happening, and they want to see it succeed. So, you know, it's ours to fail, and I don't want it to fail. So, I'm excited to hear about website. I think that we, and again, I know that the Delaware program has been very supportive in terms of providing a lot of materials and the copyright to use as many of those materials as we want and need. So, I'm looking forward to great progress over the next three months.
Randy, you mentioned regular reports. Is that by email, or what's your vision of getting us the information on the program's progress?
Well, I serve at the quest of the Commissioners, so if you would tell me how you would like those reports, I would be happy to provide them with you, to you. I can do monthly written reports and then a quarterly in-person report out, or virtual report out if you would like, or whatever you feel like you would like to make sure. I know we have just a couple of months to make some real traction, and so you might want something more frequent. I would be happy to give you whatever you feel like you would like to make sure you're tracking this.
Zan?
I would be grateful to see monthly written reports, and a quarterly verbal report would be fine for this next period, and we'll go from there. So, included with the monthly written reports, and we will go ahead and include the financial report that's running out of COG's financial system. So, we have set the standby me program in its own department, in its own program, so there's no commingling of those dollars anywhere. So, you'll be able to see the funds that are available to use for other resources. You know, we've worked really hard with Delaware to try, we have a bi-weekly job call with them, and we are really enjoying getting to know these individuals and getting to know the financial side of what it took for them to get this off the ground as well. I can tell you that we've also communicated recently with them about doing some warm handoffs via Zoom or some sort of go-to-meeting to their large funders, since we can't travel, we can't go there. And they've been very, very open to that, so hopefully we'll be able to meet some of their other funders. They've given us some great ideas about talking to the USDA and some of the other large people that are non-traditional funding for this kind of stuff. So, I started some research in that as well yesterday, working with our USDA contacts for our business lending program, trying to find some other avenues for additional funding that we can bring into this program that helps with financial literacy.
Thank you.
Well, great. This sounds, I appreciate the quick turnaround on the report. We started talking about this last week, and to have you folks join us this week with this much information is encouraging. Interim Executive Director, do you have any comments, Biff?
I just want to reinforce what you heard from Randy and Sue, that the, we see a great opportunity here that's very valuable for our region and our area to be able to bring this program, roll it out more broadly, and it's important to us to make sure it succeeds. I would add one other piece to that, to make sure it succeeds with or without the Council of Governments. We need the Council of Governments is a good place to be, but if as we roll forward, we are going through changes, the interim in that title you just used is an example of that, and some of the discussions showed that, and I don't want that to be a breakage for the standby me program. If, as we move forward, it becomes too much of a challenge for what the COG can do, we will be working to make sure it becomes a program no matter what. And that's just my reassurance to you from the position I'm in right now, whether it's as the interim ED or continuing as the Board Chair after we solidify some other things going forward in terms of staffing. So, we'll be doing everything we can to make sure it succeeds, because it's a great program.
Great. And you've solved your microphone issues, you were nice and clear, Biff. Any?
For your technology side, I didn't change anything from when I tried to speak earlier, so I don't know what else caused the hiccup, but I'm still using exactly the same device since fifteen minutes ago.
Good to know. Thanks, Biff. Any other comments on the standby me project? Hearing none, well, thank you, Randy and Sue, and looking forward to more information on this great program. Thank you. All right. Can we be two minutes early, Biff? Vance?
Did you just call me, Biff?
Yeah, it's early.
Is that what you did, Bob?
Okay.
Yes, we can be two minutes early.
All right. Well, we'll do the, item six is the consent calendar with the change that I made, that we made earlier, and I would entertain a motion.
Commissioner Volkmann, I probably missed my original time. I was in a doctor's appointment. I was supposed to present to you today about the Marketplace Grant. Would this be an okay time to do that?
This is Erica Porter.
So, Kelly, this is Vance, can you hear me?
Yes, I can.
Please tell me you're not driving your car and looking into this camera.
No, I parked in the driveway of my, of my doctor's appointment. I wasn't able to get out in time.
I just wanted to be, be clear. So, Commissioner Malone, you are free to adjust the agenda if you'd like, if you'd like to take Kelly. Kelly, you are currently next to last on the agenda, so Commissioner Malone, if you'd like to skip right to Agenda Item 7.2, you can do so. That will allow Kelly to get out of her car, and then we, and you can move back to the consent calendar.
Okay.
I'm sorry, I just need to interrupt. I don't have an agenda in front of me, so I must have missed my time and have kept you waiting. I'm sorry. I don't have any problem waiting, I just didn't have an agenda in front of me. I'm finished, bye-bye.
This sounds like fairly straightforward piece of business, so I think as long as you're set up, we will, we can be flexible and move to new business, 7.2, intent for applying for the renewal of Oregon Health Insurance Marketplace Community Partner Grant.
Thank you very much. The slip-world of virtual meetings, a little hard to get used to. So, we applied for this grant last year. It is to allow our health navigation team to not only be Oregon Health Plan Enrollment and Assistance, Enrollment and Application Assistors, but to work with the Oregon Marketplace Insurance. And what we mostly did with that was to include information and helping people through the online app, being able to look to see what the options were. Occasionally, we did some, actually going through the application with them and help them enroll, but mostly what we did was then refer them to an actual insurance agent, because the final process of that is very complex. And what we wanted to be able to do was give people the information that they needed. The best part about this is that we were able to help people in Spanish and also in Arabic, because our, the strength of our team is that we are, we have people who are bilingual, both in Spanish and Arabic. We were able to show that we did a lot of assistance, although we didn't have a lot of actual applications done. The grant is to allow us to do this for another year. It would be to hire one FTE. The last year grant, we weren't able to actually get that FTE hired. We displaced that funding on one of our existing navigators. We would like to go ahead and get that person hired if we do get the grant this year, because it was an actual burden on our team to have to adjust the work to accomplish that. The grant is for one more year, and then it has the potential of expanding for a third year. So, we'd like to apply to this year with the hope of, again, then going forward the next year as well.
All right. Are there any questions for Kelly?
I would love to speak, you know, we are at this time thinking very hard about any hires, but on the other hand, this is an arena where I expect demand is only going to increase because of the massive unemployment, and we certainly need to be able to address people in their native languages in order to make sure that they do have the health insurance coverage that they're eligible for. So, I am fully supportive of applying for the grant again, in order to make sure that we can address the needs that we expect to be coming down the pike.
We have seen a big increase in the last month, and people asking for help with insurance if they've lost their jobs.
Okay. Joe?
Just addressing the topic of adding a new position to the organization, I would just like to emphasize if the board does approve this grant and a new position associated with it, that if the grant were not to be renewed, that that position would need to, at that point, be reevaluated and eliminated if there was no additional grant funding to support
That makes perfect sense. Any other questions or comments? I would entertain a motion.
I would, yeah, mute here.
I've got it here.
Okay.
I move to, that Benton County Health Department submit the proposed grant application to the Department of Consumer and Business Services.
Second.
No, that was your motion.
Oh, that was my motion, okay. I thought you took, I thought you took it away from me.
Just.
Okay.
Just filling it out, Annabelle. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you, Kelly. You win the award for the most original background of our meeting this morning, and thank you for checking in.
Thank you so much. And again, I apologize for disrupting the flow of your meeting, but I appreciate, I appreciate that. Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right. Now, we're back to approving the consent calendar.
I'll move, I'll move to approve the consent calendar.
Okay.
Second.
It's been moved.
See, my, when I turn my sound up, that's.
You don't need to turn it on.
While I'm here, okay.
Yeah, while you're here, Commissioner, we have you set up with other devices there.
Oh, that's what that is.
So, yeah, that's what that is, so you don't need to worry about.
We're protecting mute.
The mute versus unmute.
That, I need protecting from myself.
You've got three or four microphones over there, Annabelle. I think you're okay.
Well, I thought this was taking over.
It's been moved and seconded, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye? Consent calendar is approved.
Aye.
And now, we're on to the public hearing, and it's after 9:30, so we're in wonderful shape here. All right. Tuesday, May 19, 2020, at 9:30 a.m. is time set for the public hearing to consider the formation of the Judy Lane Reimbursement District for Road Improvements pursuant to Governor Kate Brown's Executive Order Number 12. Pursuant to Governor Kate Brown's Executive Order Number 20 Day 16, there is no physical access to this meeting room. But this hearing is available via go-to meeting, which was noticed in the Corvallis Gazette Times. In accordance with the governor's executive order, no oral testimony will be taken. Interested persons were encouraged to submit written or electronic testimony prior to the hearing. And we did receive submissions, all of which have been provided to each board member for consideration. All submitters will be notified in writing of the final decision. So with that, now it's time for a staff report.
Hi, this is Owen. I'm a public records engineer. The public hearing to today, we are worried the certified mail hadn't gotten to all of the property owners and the meeting invite information wasn't correct in the notice of public hearings. We have received all of the receipts for the certified mails that everybody has noticed. And I will go over the background real quickly again. So the applicant for this reimbursement district is Jeff, Elizabeth, and Greg Doyle. They own 12 properties on Judy Lane. And between 2010 and 2016, in order to develop those lots, they performed extensive road improvements required by the county. They widened the road, performed drainage improvements, and constructed an emergency access road that connects Judy Lane to Foster Road. Those road improvements benefited more than just properties owned by the Doils. And the purpose of the reimbursement district is that those remaining lots that can develop at which time they choose to develop, instead of paying into more road improvements, that fee will go towards reimbursing the original developers who did all of the road improvements that would be required for these other lots to develop. So if the district is formed, lots 75 and 76 of Alpine Orchard Tracts would be required to pay a $14,000 and $10 reimbursement fee at the time at which they are applying for billing permits. And I think the only change from last time, and we discussed this, is that before that original public hearing, we received comments from the applicant and one of the affected parcel or property owners. And due to that, Parcel 1 Partition Plat 2015-006 was removed from the proposed reimbursement district. And I think that's everything. If anybody has any questions, please feel free to ask.
Owen, which lots were removed from the proposed district?
It's Parcel 1 of Partition Plat 2016-006. It's the one in the top left corner of the map that was provided.
So that's tax lot 3700?
Yes.
Yes.
And then tax lot 2300, the red cross-hatched ones on the map?
That is the one that is to be included. That's lots 75 and 76.
Okay. Any other questions for Owen?
And this is a review of the last session. I think the meeting... The reason for postponing the hearing to this meeting is there was a glitch in the go-to meeting information that was sent out that was corrected for this meeting. So I would entertain a... If there's no more questions, I would entertain a motion.
I move to approve the order establishing the reimbursement district.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Okay. Motion carries. So I...
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Owen. Okay. And I will close the public hearing. Just like that.
It's much easier, doesn't it?
All right. There we are. So we're back to new business 7.1. Discussion and decision of notice of intent to apply for COVID-19 emergency supplemental funding through the Criminal Justice Commission. Take it away, Brian Lee.
Yep. So basically, the CJC grant is similar to the one we did for BJ. A lot of acronyms here. It's a $58,000 grant geared toward law enforcement administered to the state. And we are going to apply for a couple of small decontamination units, a chemical for the bigger decontamination and smaller decontamination unit. And then Kevin Higgins was going to apply for some radio repeaters for rural areas to increase our coverage in some of our dead zones that we have. And then any remainder was going to be spent on PPE for first responder agencies. So that's sort of what our focus was for that grant.
Okay. Any questions for Brian?
I've got a couple on the fogger units, cleaning units. Can you order those before the grant comes in? Or do you have to wait for the grant before you can get in the queue?
That is a good question. I know once we get approved to spend the funds, then we can order it. So the first big unit, which is the one that would be the most useful, we are getting that through the BJA grant. That is coming... Or that should be... We should hear more about that here in the next two weeks, and then we can order it. The smaller units, though, I believe same thing. That's wait till we get at least approval for the grant. But after that, I think June 1 is the deadline, and they expect it to turn around within two weeks. So by mid-June, we should hear back, and then we can start spending the money as soon as we hear back.
Great. Any other questions for Brian on this topic? If not, I would entertain a motion.
I don't have an agenda in front of me, so...
Okay.
Zan, go ahead.
I would move to approve the notice of intent to apply for the COVID-19 supplemental funding through the Criminal Justice Commission.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Motion carries. And great work, Brian. And keep us posted on the timetable on the grant and ordering the equipment.
Absolutely. We'll do.
Okay. We're on to 8.1. Discussion of the EOC Policy Direction. Is that you, Brian?
Commissioner Malone, let me go ahead and interject real quick.
Okay.
For this portion of the meeting, the order will be of Vance Cronie. Our county council will go first to talk about some of the legal activity that's occurred over the last 24 hours. Then we will go to Danielle and Charlie for a Health Department update. Then we will go to Brian Lee for an EOC update. And then I'll provide a couple of brief updates as well. So we decided for Vance to go first so the board has the framework of the legal aspects that are occurring surrounding the coronavirus response.
Great.
So as you all know, I sent out an email with the Baker County decision yesterday morning, I think. The gist of that decision was that a Circuit Court judge in Baker County ruled on a preliminary... A motion for preliminary injunction filed by a number of churches. The ruling was that the governor's declaration of emergency and a number of her executive orders are no longer valid as the state statute dictates essentially a lifespan for those executive orders. Clearly, that decision out... And that, at that time, the judge issued his decision, the state asked the judge to stay or put a hold on his decision until an appeal could be filed or until he finalized his opinion. The judge said, no, it's effective immediately. That essentially, for a brief period of time, threw into question the validity of, A, the state's declaration of emergency, and, B, the executive orders issued by Governor Brown. The state wasted no time in going to the Supreme Court to appeal the decision. And what the state has done is file a petition for a writ of mandamus with the Supreme Court, asking the court to essentially overturn the Baker County judge's decision. At the same time, the state has asked the Supreme Court to put a stay or to hold off on implementing the Circuit Court's order. The Supreme Court granted the state's motion to stay or postpone that Circuit Court decision. That is... And I want to clarify because the newspaper was incorrect this morning. It said that the Supreme Court found the Circuit Court judge's ruling to be unlawful or illegal. That's not what the Supreme Court said. The Supreme Court said, we're merely putting on the shelf the Baker County judge's decision while we take this matter up. So at this point, at 10 minutes to 10 on Tuesday, everything that Governor Brown has put in place through her executive orders and her declaration of emergency is in effect. So there is no difference right now from the situation we were in on Friday. That's part one. Part two is because the state has filed a petition for a writ of mandamus, the order that the Supreme Court issued yesterday granting the motion to stay the decision set a timeline for the state and the plaintiffs to respond to the state's request to grant a writ of mandamus. And that deadline is May 27, which is Friday. Petitions for writ of mandamus are a pretty fast-track legal vehicle to get an issue in front of a court and obtain a ruling in a short period of time. As you guys are well aware from our various lawsuits, sometimes a civil litigation can go for years without any resolution. A mandamus is a vehicle that avoids almost all slowdowns and obstacles and allows the court to consider a critical legal question in a timely manner. So that's part two. Part three is, and this is what Brian Lee asked me about this morning. He said, well, hasn't the governor issued a declaration under the emergency management statutes? And that's important because... That's an important distinction because there are two statutes that have been sort of thrown together in the governor's various executive orders and declaration. One is ORS Chapter 401, which is the emergency management statutes. Those are your... And I hate to say it because I don't want to trivialize it, but it's more your garden variety emergency management... Your floods, your earthquake, your fires, allowing the governor to reallocate resources and personnel at the state level to deal with those physical disasters. The other statutory scheme that the governor has issued her emergency declaration under is ORS Chapter 433, which is the Public Health Emergency. So that is important because under ORS 433, the Public Health Emergency, and I sent you all the statute yesterday, 433.441, there is a very specific time limit on the duration of an emergency declaration or actions declared by the governor under ORS 43. And it is, A, 14 days unless she gets an extension, but only for another 48 days. For all intents and purposes, it's a 28-day time limit for the effectiveness of any executive orders under ORS 433.441. That's what the Baker County judge looked at and said, Governor Brown, State of Oregon, 28 days has passed. The law is clear. Nothing past the 28 days from issuance is effective, null and void. And candidly, he's not wrong on that topic. But where it gets difficult is the interplay between ORS 433 and ORS 401. And I can tell you that I am 100% positive that the state's lawyers drafted the various executive orders putting in ORS 401, 433, 431A in an effort to cover as many bases as possible. So you have one chapter, 433, that the Baker County judge hung his hat on to declare the executive orders null and void. But you have the other chapters at play, 401, 431A, that create a great degree of ambiguity and, candidly, flexibility for the state to continue its management of the COVID-19 pandemic. And realistically, that's what the Supreme Court is going to look at. It's going to look at... I believe the Supreme Court is going to look at whether the governor and the government can continue to move forward managing the pandemic under ORS 401 and 431A as it has been. Because that would allow things to continue as they have been.
Is there a definite time for that particular?
There is not.
So it's open-ended?
Right. Right. And again, that's... I'm sure that is why the state's lawyers put these various statutes in because they had to have known...
Oh, yeah.
That there's a 28-day limit on the Public Health Emergency Declaration. But trying to give themselves a safety net and the governor a safety net for as long as possible makes sense. And the way to do that is to bring these other statutes that give pretty broad and, to some degree, less defined emergency powers into the governor's arsenal, if you will. I think it is debatable whether some of the actions that the governor has taken under ORS 433, which is the Public Health Emergency Ordinance or Statute, are allowable under 431. But it's just as debatable as to whether they're not allowable. So what I'm saying is it's a very unclear set of powers, particularly when the statutes talk about full police power under the Constitution. Well, as you guys know, that can mean almost anything. So I believe that, from a legal perspective, I don't believe the Baker County judge was incorrect when it comes to Chapter 433. I do believe that was an extremely narrow reading, given the fact that there are other statutes at play here that could very well provide enough support to allow the declarations to move forward. And that's what the Supreme Court is being asked to consider. And because the deadline for filing responses by plaintiffs to the petition for writ of mandamus is Friday... mandamus is Friday, I would not be at all surprised to see a hearing set next week with potentially a decision to follow the weekend to that. Now, just, just to put this out there for you, because it can easily be done, the Supreme Court could play games. They've already said, we're staying the Baker County decision. The question of whether or not the governor's orders are lawful resides with the Supreme Court. No other court, no other circuit court can make a ruling that would undercut this appeal at this point, because it's now at the highest court in the state. The Supreme Court, if it was inclined to find that the Baker County decision is correct, but in the best interests of the health, safety, and well-being of Oregonians, it could sit on a decision.
It would say that.
It could sit on a decision.
Okay.
And allow that stay to essentially keep in place the health and safety protocols that the executive orders have, have put out for jurisdictions. And then it could, later down the road, when the emergency sort of wanes, issue its ruling. I don't know if that's the way they'd go. I'm just pointing out, there are a number of paths this appeal can take. It seems to me, given our current stance with O H A, all the county health departments, that there would be a, an immediate yanking of the rug out from under everybody. That just doesn't seem like something that the current makeup of the Supreme Court is going to do.
I think so.
It will either rule that the orders are lawful, or it could very well spread things out to minimize an adverse ruling, the impact of an adverse ruling.
If they were to decide that it was lawful, say fairly quickly, would they put a timeframe on that?
The Supreme Court would not go beyond what the statute allows. And if there is no timeframe in the statute, the Supreme Court has no authority to put a statute, to put a time limit in place. If however, there's some provision of a statute I'm aware of that says this can't last more than, you know, 180 days, for example, and it is in the law, then, okay, the Supreme Court wouldn't put it in place on its own. It would point out that based on the statute, this is when the order has to expire.
Okay, Joe?
Vance, just to clarify, based on where things stand legally today, the action that the board took in terms of reopening Benton County to, with Phase One, the actions that the board has taken and is taking and that staff are taking, nothing changes at this point in time based on the legal status. We can continue to move forward as planned with Phase One?
Yes. So, and I guess that's something I did not mention. It was, we, I sent out the email yesterday to you all. The state's declaration of emergency and the executive order issued by the governor are, while we are leaning heavily on the executive orders, they really are completely independent of the emergency declaration that the board declared last two months ago. So even if everything that the state has done just collapses, it goes away, your emergency declaration is still in place. So all the steps you're doing, Phase One reopening, safety protocols throughout our buildings are unaffected. Now, with regards to Phase One, what could be affected if in the worst case scenario, the executive orders are nullified and there is no authority, there could be no O H A determination as to whether you, we can move to Phase Two, but it doesn't impact our ability to utilize that framework on our own. And I would fully expect other counties to do just that. So it wouldn't be just Benton County following these protocols that have been established. It would be other counties saying, this makes sense. We're looking out for the health, safety, and well-being of our citizens. We're going to continue this track. So we can use that framework. We are using it to carry out essentially our emergency response through the framework that the state has set up. If the state goes away, we can still use that framework, but it will almost certainly be without any formal input or guidance from the state. May well have informal, but not formal.
Thank you.
So I'm really curious now with that.
With this whole issue, we still have the metropolitan counties, Washington, Multnomah, and Clackamas, who've not submitted a plan yet. What does, say we hadn't submitted a plan, how would that affect us?
It wouldn't affect us at all right now.
Okay.
Because, remember, the governor's orders are still.
In place, okay.
So as long as that Baker County decision is stayed, and there hasn't been a determination by the Supreme Court.
Okay.
No change from what we were doing last week.
Can they go beyond the state Supreme Court?
They, I don't think so, because the reason Supreme Court of the United States would take an appeal from a state Supreme Court is if it involves a federal statute or a federal constitutional issue. I don't see either one of those in play in this particular lawsuit.
Zan?
If the executive orders are invalidated by the Supreme Court concurring with the Baker County Circuit Court decision, as I understand it, it would remove the Oregon Office of Emergency Management and the Oregon Health Authority from the response in that emergency role. And would that also create some real instability and uncertainty around the federal FEMA pipeline of funds to counties because of the state no longer being in a state of emergency and not having those players in place?
I don't think it would impact the ability of the counties to seek and obtain reimbursement. Because we do that anyway without a declaration of a state emergency. I remember a couple of years ago, we had flooding, and it was our declaration that triggered the ability to receive FEMA funds. It may however, Zan, make it a bit more difficult to get to a reimbursement place, but in terms of qualifying for FEMA reimbursement, shouldn't have any effect. As long as Benton County's declaration remains in effect. So I want to remind you guys that ours expires, I want to say it's June 30th. So just know that as we head into next month, you're going to be asked to consider keeping the, or extending the emergency declaration.
So, okay, yeah.
Well, I see why you got a microphone today, Vance.
And why it's going away on Thursday, right?
We'll, we'll talk about that later. My first thought yesterday when I heard this, I had a couple, but we have a plan and it's like a big ship or a big boat and you don't just, oh, now we're going to go this direction or that direction. We have a plan, stick to it, and let some of the noise die down and this is a health emergency. It's not a legal who did it or.
That's right.
And we need to, and I think we are keeping that in the forefront of our priorities. So that was my thought at 1:00 when things were pinging and the fairgrounds got calls. Does that mean the fair's on? So some people were ready to get excited. A fun question for you, why Baker County, Vance?
So the lead plaintiff is Elkhorn Baptist Church, and they are located in Baker County. Also, I am 100% certain, because remember I talked about the Supreme Court could play games, plaintiffs play games, searching for the most conservative court.
Really?
I know, go figure, go figure. But you know, this, this is a sort of claim that would not have flown in Baker County. Oh, not a, exactly. So plaintiffs.
Several other counties have.
So plaintiffs look for the most receptive courts. And it really comes as no surprise that it's as far east as possible. Almost, almost. But I think, Pat, you're, you make a good point, and it dovetails with my comment about the Supreme Court, if it was even considering upholding the decision, it could play games. This is not a legal issue. This is a health issue.
Exactly.
And to use the legal system to undercut the efforts that the government and local jurisdictions are making to protect and safeguard the health and safety of their citizens, I put a lot of faith in our Supreme Court.
Oh, yeah.
And not allowing that to happen. I think the makeup of the court is probably.
Well, and candidly, I would hope even if it wasn't as, you know, left-leaning, that they would think about what's the right thing to do.
Right.
Okay.
And just a refresher, we are not very many days into Phase One, which will last at least till June 5th, 21 days from when we got in there. So stay tuned on that. I hope people are behaving themselves and that Phase One will go smoothly. Any other questions for Vance?
I don't know the question for Vance, but what if we wanted, what if something comes up that continuation of Phase One is necessary before we move to Phase Two?
In light of the appeal to the court, to the Supreme Court?
No, no, I'm talking about, but just, just what happens? I mean, we don't, I'm not even talking about the legal estimates, yeah.
So to me, it just keeps going until we get approval from the state.
Okay, okay, so the state has to, has to allow, give us the permission to go to Phase Two.
That's correct. We will have to apply for Phase Two. Brian Lee and Dave Busby as our E O C directors would be responsible for taking that step. Brian, you can certainly comment on that if you'd like.
Sure, yeah. Do I actually have any guidance on what the Phase Two application will look like? I know one piece of it will be demonstrating that we didn't meet any of the metrics that would put us back or delay us going into Phase Two. So I know that that will be a component of it. And so we are monitoring our number of tests that we do, as well as the number of positives we get daily, so we can, to start laying the groundwork to demonstrate that we are eligible if that time comes to go into Phase Two. And that's all we really know regarding Phase Two. We know that it might add a couple sectors, but realistically, it's just going to expand the number of people that are allowed to gather at any given location, expand capacity at restaurants, et cetera. And that's all the information we have on Phase Two at this time.
Okay, thank you.
With Vance as our warm-up act, we'll move on to Charlie and Danielle.
I've got a message on my, about asking me to turn off the webcam. I haven't done anything, just wanted you to look at it.
Charlie and Danielle?
Charlie, do you want to go first? No, go ahead, you can start.
Okay. Yeah, so from the communicable disease side, no new cases today, so we are stable at 50 pre-tuminal cases. We have our contact tracing staff completely trained up, 24 contact tracers. We are working on planning for long-term longevity of that capacity. Right now, we are using staff who have been redeployed from other parts of public health and health navigation. We understand that at some point, people will be returning to more of their normal duties. And so I've been working with Tracy Martino, I'm working with the team on longer term. The state has opened up a portal to do central registry and central training of, basic training of contact tracers, and then feed those volunteers back to local health departments all over the state. So we are directing local people who have reached out to that new local, that new central state contact tracing volunteer portal. You are aware that Bill Emiger's team has been working quite a lot, both before we entered Phase One, but particularly since Friday, with food operators and providing technical assistance, making sure that they are up to speed. There's been a variety of levels of compliance, understanding, public cooperation with those operators. And so Bill seems been, been very busy and was out over the weekend engaging with those food service operators that we normally regulate to provide them with updating. I think that's it from my angle. Been working with Danielle and others on a number of contracts and other updates, and Danielle can give details on them.
Thanks, Charlie. So I did send out the health department priorities for this week. I apologize if those relate this week. We were trying to get those out on Friday, and I did get it out until mid-morning yesterday. The big things that we're working on this week, we've identified the alternate care site as OSU for this current time period. OSU has only agreed to that until mid-August. So we are needing to look at likely developing an R F P so we can develop a permanent, a more permanent site. Not sure what that's going to look like, but we are going to move forward with that. Charlie went over the communicable disease and epidemiology division and what they're working on. The homeless division, we've finally been able to operationalize and institute some of the planning that we've done over the last several weeks for the homeless division within the E O C. We have the RV car camping at the fairgrounds up and going. We have a referral process in place for that, and in fact, we are processing our first referral for that this morning. We are waiting for Chance to return the contract regarding the hotel motel sheltering for homeless individuals. Jeff at Chance is reviewing that and will get that back to us as soon as possible. We're also in the process of finishing or completing a contract for recreational vehicles to be parked at the fairgrounds for individuals who are unable to isolate appropriately in their home setting. We've explored hotels and motels for weeks, trying to look for an opportunity to shelter COVID-positive patients and have been unsuccessful in that. So with Lynn McKee's assistance from the fairgrounds, we have identified a location, or excuse me, a company that will rent recreational vehicles to the county, and they will be placed out there. There's still a lot of work happening by Vulnerable Populations Section. Rosio Munoz and Matt Gillespie are actively working on that and will continue to do so. The other thing that we're working on actively that Charlie's been knee-deep in is an R F P to find a lab, a lab for testing long-term care facilities if there's a focal outbreak of COVID in the community, et cetera. There's an R F P going out hopefully in the next few days to, to find an additional lab in addition to. There's an RFP going out hopefully in the next few days to, to find an additional lab, addition to Quest, which the CHC has a contract with, and not relying on the state labs for those testing results because we recognize that those are likely to get overrun if and when these outbreaks continue to happen. So those are the things that the EOC has been focused on for the last week or so.
All right. Any questions for Danielle or Charlie?
I just, just a comment, I'm rather glad to hear about the, going up RFPs for some of these items. Now that we have a little bit of slack time and some time to prepare, being ready for the needed potential surge capacity for testing, long-term care facilities, or any other kind of homeless situation. And also for the alternative care site, I know these have been really sticky issues and very difficult to, for us to come up with answers for. I think it's great to try and turn it around and see if the community can come up with some other alternatives for these measures. Also grateful to hear about the solution of the rental RVs for COVID-positive folks to shelter if they don't have any other location to quarantine or isolate. That's a big breakthrough after not being able to find any motels or hotels that are willing to accept these folks.
Yeah, it's been a lot of work and I think a lot of that was just navigating a lot of the relationships in the community and figuring out who's willing to do what. I think that's what's taken a big chunk of this time is those communications and collaborations are slow-moving. But yeah, we're finally starting to see this work that we've been doing settle into place and that does feel really good. I agree, the RFPs are things that we need to have in place. Essentially what we want is just things we can pull off the shelf when we need them and not have to scramble to do it at the last minute. So that's what we've been working on and hopefully can move forward with.
Thank you, that's great.
Charlie, I had a comment for you on the restaurant openings and I'm glad the health department is helping guide restaurants through the process. And you may have already thought of this, but the public needs to be reassured that the facilities, the restaurants are open and safe for business. I think there's, there's a big difference between being open and having actual customers feel comfortable coming in.
Yeah, thanks for that Commissioner, it's definitely a topic we've discussed a lot. I was on a, a business community town hall last week, on Thursday, the day before the retail opening. And it was, it was a large item of discussion among business owners that in this community, that level of trust, people are likely to vote with their pocketbooks. And that the businesses that engender confidence and compliance, unlike maybe some other communities around the country that we've seen on the news, it's likely to be an advantage for businesses here. And I'm very confident that, that our businesses are taking that seriously. There are two more business community town halls that we're working with Kate on. Danielle and Bill will be on those. And that definitely keeps coming up, that it's not just for food establishments, it's others. And when, I think we definitely saw this on Friday, and it's fades, and it just keeps coming up, that businesses that are not in compliance with their Phase One guidance, I'm not hearing about it, both from their customers and particularly on social media, which is very active in this community. And it, it, word definitely gets around.
I also think we're at the advantage with the EOC right now because Kate Portia is our operations section chief and Paul Belata is the assistant chief. So I think that is giving us some really good footing and some really good perspective with the EOC in the city, in the city limits, where if it were just a county perspective, it may be different. So I think that's a huge advantage to have Kate as our operations section chief.
I totally agree, just back to the discussion we had very early on, that that message congruence and making sure messages are consistent is really critical. And I think we've got that with, with business openings.
Great, any other questions or comments? All right, well, really appreciate all your efforts and thanks for the update. Next up is Brian Lee.
Yeah, good morning folks, so my update's going to be pretty short and sweet. Ciara and I are not on in terms of the EOC director, EOC manager role this week. Dave Busby's the EOC director this week. We are still working through, basically getting everything ready for our Phase Two application. We're monitoring everything to document things, so when we go into Phase Two or when we get notification of how we apply, we'll sort of be ready for that. Our other focus is actually trying to go back to, I guess at some point, we had some other jobs. So we're actually focused in terms of the EOC efforts on rounding out our EOP and getting that squared away and adopted so that way we can keep everything in compliance as we move forward. To piggyback on what Vance said, related to our eligibility, yeah, he was totally right, we're still eligible for FEMA reimbursement. The only tricky thing is if they might say we're only eligible up to those 28 days if the governor's stuff is found to be unconstitutional. So it'll be an interesting play out to see how that all works out. Overall though, from what I understand, we should not be overly concerned about it. Even if her stuff's found to be unconstitutional, it's still a national level emergency, so that might override everything and make us all eligible for reimbursement. So we're kind of in the Wild West, we have no idea what this is going to play out and look like, so it's kind of interesting in that way. As for the EOC staffing, I did a quick count on my way in today, we have about 20 people here total. Of course, operations still heavily staffed, all the other sections have pretty much just one person or someone, a second person possibly helping remotely. So we are pretty much as minimally staffed as we can be and that is again, just so we can pivot and maneuver if we have an outbreak at a long-term care facility or we need to support anything with the health department operationally. So we're ready to do that, we've rounded out most of our plans and have operational plans in place, basically ready to go if we had to. For your guys' information, the jail is looking at going into, again, not a full reopening, but their own version of Phase One opening. And we're talking about doing testing on, basically all folks are required to remain in custody. So we're working out contracts there so we can start screening people so we know who's coming in and have a, a good process there as well. We already have screening processes in place, but this will add another component if we can actually test people and find out if someone's positive. And we're having a lot of discussions with both the jail and pro and probation about how to shelter someone if they cannot go home. For example, they have a, they have to go home, but then they have an elderly grandma or parents that they're living with, how do we accommodate that? So it's just continuing our non-congregate sheltering piece. I've been working with Danielle and Sarah Hartstein and we are going to submit an extension to our original FEMA request for non-congregate sheltering, so we have it in place. And we can also piggyback on that same request to shelter anyone that we may need to. So if we have an inmate that needs sheltering or something like that, we could theoretically use this hotel option, as well as any other non-congregate sheltering options, which we've loosely talked about, say, using the fairgrounds, setting up individual tents, if it's a room inside the fairgrounds that we could use. So there's different ideas that I've been talking with the undersheriff and sheriff about it, as well as the captain of the jail to sort of coordinate some ideas. And so we're going to try to hone in on some of those, just in case we have something like that happen. But those discussions are happening and the State Department of Corrections, I guess, is also very, very much communicating with the local law enforcement of what their screening and release procedures are. So we sort of know what, what we're looking at as they come into our hands, like for example, with pro and probation.
Any questions for Brian? Zan?
Just to follow up, Brian, so we are continuing, have we been continuing to see folks released from state prisons on early release and other programs? And so I'm assuming so far it has not been an issue at all of someone coming back that is COVID-positive?
Brian, you want me to say that?
Yeah, please do, open your door.
This is Greg, the undersheriff. No, we have not had any problems with anybody being released from state prison that's COVID-positive. They have discussed several things, but nothing has impacted Benton County.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Commissioner, this is Charlie, if I could weigh in, so for a couple of weeks, there's been a process put in place between public health statewide and Department of Corrections for notification and tracking of prisoners that may have been in facilities, where there has been, or if there has been a COVID-positive. So there, there is a tracking system that's been put in place for public health. But you know, as, as the undersheriff said, there's been nothing here in Benton County.
Brian and Charlie and Danielle's comment applies also. I really appreciate the, the tracking on expenses and looking for every opportunity for reimbursement. That's, I hate to say it, but that's a really important part of, part of the job and appreciate the attention that you're paying to that. Just a comment or a question for all of you, is, is this getting anywhere close to routine? Are you feeling like this is anywhere close to normal and that you're just going about your job?
So this is Danielle, I finally have been able to transfer back a little bit of my time to doing my quote-unquote real job. So it does not feel routine yet, it feels like it's still, it's a very odd transition from going to the EOC and functioning in that environment to transferring back to your quote-unquote real job and trying to shift gears. It feels very strange, it feels very much like a, like you're on two really separate train tracks, but just picking the engine up from one to the other and that transition is not smooth.
Okay, thank you. Charlie?
Yeah, I would, I would agree with Danielle, I'm not sure what routine is anymore. You know, is routine to have challenges come up on a frequent basis and have, sort of create a new work group, respond to a new need? That's what the routine is now and I think we're becoming much better at that, at creating kind of ad hoc and, and create up work groups. People are learning to, to deal with one another on a, across specialty and, and interdepartmental basis and between the city and the county much better. But I'm not sure I'd use the word routine.
Charlie, I just wanted to apologize, this is Lilia Neville, if you heard giggling in the background, it was because I just, it really resonated with me when you said the only thing that is routine is that a challenge crops up every hour. So apologies for the giggling.
Zan?
I do have one question for the undersheriff, now that I know he's on the line. I, there's no way to bring this up sensitively, I'm just going to say it. There was a lot of furor on social media yesterday because of, of one individual rampaging through town and breaking a lot of storefront windows in downtown and overturning various containerized plants and picnic tables and everything else. And I know that that individual was apprehended and arrested and I was wondering whether or not our jail situation will allow us to hold him for a time and address the needs and concerns there or, or not.
Zan, this is Greg, at this time, yes, we're, we are keeping him for a while. It's going to, a couple of things could make a determination on how long, and I think the DA's office could probably speak on that as well. But for right now, we're keeping him as we can. It, it just depends on, on circumstances that come up during this long weekend, may make a difference. Hard to say, but for right now, yes, we are. And we are aware of the community concerns about him, but there's others as concerning as well that, that we're trying to deal with on some of the other circumstances we're dealing with. So nothing, nothing normal, that's for sure.
Other than having the, the challenges at the jails, that, that part's still normal?
Yes, it's just a different category. Trying to isolate, trying to test, trying to distance them. So we're all in the process of doing that normally, the jail makes it a little bit more challenging, but so far, we're accomplishing the requirements that we need to do.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
All right, any other questions for these folks? Well, thank you for your wonderful efforts and hopefully, maybe when I ask a question next time, you can say, well, it's kind of routine. But thank you.
Commissioner Malone, I have a few remaining updates before we move on to other.
Okay, Joe?
Commissioners, I wanted to follow up with you, as you recall, last Thursday, you voted in a public meeting to reopen the Benton County community as part of the Phase One reopening. That took effect to May 15th. The board also discussed the reopening of county facilities. At that point, I had asked for some flexibility to work with the department heads to determine the best date. The board had shared that ideally, we would reopen no later than May 26th. As a result of that direction from the board last Thursday, I did meet with department heads and other elected officials, received their feedback. And based on that feedback, decided to move forward with reopening county facilities to public access as of May 26th, that is next Tuesday. We will reopen our facilities to what I would call limited public access. What's important is we have continued to provide services, albeit our facilities have been closed to public access. We've still had a number of employees that have been working throughout the pandemic in our respective facilities, whether or not that be in law enforcement or the health department. But we are gearing up now to welcome the public back as of May 26th. That will be under limited circumstances. We will continue to encourage as much teleworking as possible, but every department is being required to have a physical presence in their building, starting on May 26th, in order to assist customers that are coming into our facilities. We do have a team that's led by Lori Starha and Matt Weatherall that is working in conjunction with our facilities department to ensure that we have the proper routing and screening of customers and that we're taking employee safety as one of the utmost considerations. I do think that we will be prepared to reopen as of May 26th. Things will not be perfect, we are going to enter or dip our toe back into the water slowly and incrementally. Over the course of many weeks, maybe even several months, we will repopulate our buildings to the point of where they were prior to COVID. But we will do it slow, methodically, and we will do it in concert with counsel from our public health officials. Our biggest fear is to have a resurgence that we will then need to deal with. So we're going to be slow, incremental, methodical, and there's a whole crew of folks that have been working on this. And you will see when you walk into our facilities, the measures that have been taken to provide for social distancing or physical distancing. for social distancing or physical distancing as well as protocols as relates to wearing of masks and so on. So we have also, as of yesterday, increased the hygiene standards in our buildings and our buildings that have public access will be addressed three times a day relative to the public areas, doorknobs, bathrooms, so on. So anyway, that's just a really brief summary of a whole bunch of work that's going on behind the scenes. There will be an email from me going out later today informing employees of our plan to begin to reopen our facilities to public access. And then we'll have a series of other emails that go out through the week informing you and others as relates to our reopening plans. But at this point, May 26th is the date that we'll be reopening to public access.
A week from today.
A week from today.
Anything else?
I would like to point out that we are having an election today. We did focus significantly on ensuring the courthouse would be ready to receive members of the public who were needing to vote in person. So that is going on today and we put a lot of effort working with a county clerk to make sure we had the proper protocols in place for cleaning and physical distancing as well. I would like, before we move out of this meeting, to have Teresa Farley update us on the board's schedule for next Thursday, I'm sorry, for this coming Thursday, as we have some anomalies with a number of schedules. And I know Teresa's been trying to work that out, so if we could ask Teresa to share with the board what your schedule looks like Thursday morning. I would also like to highlight that the board meeting will still be hosted from the board's office where it is being hosted today. That will occur again on Thursday. And then on next Tuesday is where we transition the board meetings to the Sunset Building and that's where we will have the ability to have all three commissioners, if you choose, to be present physically for that meeting. So Teresa, if you would like to just clarify for the board and myself what our agenda looks like Thursday morning.
Good morning, Commissioners. This Thursday, you have the Juvenile Sheriff and the District Attorney in meetings. And at this time, Matt and Scott did not have anything to discuss unless you had something that you needed to discuss with them. Otherwise, they would see you in July. That's their next meeting. We can always reschedule if need be. And the District Attorney, he will be moved to 9:00 AM so that way you can attend the EOC policy discussion briefing. That's what I have right now. Right.
9:00 AM, we have a one-hour meeting with the District Attorney and then our regular 10 o'clock board meeting.
You are correct and I will make that change on your schedule.
Great. That's correct.
Right. Thank you, Commissioner.
Thanks, Teresa.
You're welcome.
All right. Do you have more?
Commissioners, I don't have any more other than to remind you that you do have another agenda, another meeting subsequent to this meeting. So please don't sign off once this meeting adjourns because we'll roll into another meeting.
It should be short, I promise.
I ran out of juice, so I had to plug back in.
Okay. Well, going back to my earlier comment about having a plan and executing it, in theory, our Plexiglas shipment comes tomorrow and then that would help meet our schedule. Is that correct, Joe?
That's correct. We do have a order that is supposed to be delivered no later than tomorrow, which will provide us the ability to have Plexiglas or sneeze guards at locations where public access interactions will occur. So that is currently the plan. We also, I would highlight that even without the Plexiglas, we'll still be exceeding the CDC standards because we will be requiring both customers as well as employees during any interaction to wear face masks as well as being six feet apart. So that's a very, that's at a minimum. At a maximum, we will have a Plexiglas piece installed between that interaction.
Well, the other idea that goes with that, if you're not feeling well, stay home. We've, I think, perfected a lot of alternatives to face-to-face meetings to take care of business, so. All right. Is that, are we ready for other? I believe so. Do we have any? Zan?
I just wanted to acknowledge that this is the first meeting that I believe that Alyssa Rush has attended and to say welcome to our new PIO.
Thank you.
Alyssa, this is Lilia. Would you want to go ahead and introduce yourself to the board a little bit?
Sure thing. Let me get my camera on. Oh, it's on. There we go. Hi, I am Alyssa Rush. I am your new Benton County Public Information Officer. I'm so excited to be joining you. My background is in community affairs and communication through the Oregon Department of Transportation. I've worked on projects such as the Van Buren Bridge and the US-20 safety upgrades. So I'm familiar with some of the big projects in this area. Yeah, so I'm just very excited to be joining Benton County. It's kind of a rapidly changing time. I started my first day in the EOC yesterday and it's just been a blast.
Thank you, Alyssa. Yep, like she said, yesterday was her first day with Benton County and we threw her in the deep end at the EOC and she came back today. So we are just thrilled to have her. And I think I've told enough people in the room, I might as well tell the public, that this is the first day my blood pressure has been lower since I can't remember and that is all thanks to Alyssa. So we're so excited to have her join our team.
Welcome, Alyssa, and glad you came back for day two.
I'm very happy to be here.
That's a good sign. All right. Any other other? Hearing none. We will move on to the LC County Service District Governing Board meeting.